Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Aging Committee's public hearing Thursday, February 20, 2025. We have the following. First, I would like to invite my co-chair to say a few words of welcome.
Welcome. Let's get going.
Thank you. The bills that we're reviewing today is HB 6771, an act requiring health insurance coverage for biomarker testing; SB 1278, an act concerning long-term care insurance premium rates; SB 1279, an act concerning nursing home staffing ratios; HB 6911, an act concerning asset limits for Husky C beneficiaries; HB 6912, an act establishing an Alzheimer's disease and dementia advisory board; SB 1280, an act concerning the responsibilities of the community ombudsman; and HB 6913, an act concerning LGBTQ and discrimination in long-term care facilities. So with that, we'll go get right on. First person is Amy Porter.
Good morning, Representative Garibay, Senator Hockadell, and Representative Bolinsky, and distinguished members of the Aging Committee. My name is Amy Porter, and it's great to see you all. It's my first time before you guys this year, so great to see you. I'm the Commissioner of the Department of Aging and Disability Services. For those of you who aren't familiar with our agency, we focus on five core service areas: employment, education, independent living, accessibility, and advocacy for both older adults and people with disabilities. So I'm here to offer comments on three bills being heard today. Sounds like you have a lot on your agenda, but we are going to speak to House Bill 6912, Senate Bill 1280, and House Bill 6913. Yep.
Let's continue. Thank you, Commissioner.
Sure. So first, as currently drafted, House Bill 6912 would establish a 14-member Alzheimer's Disease and Dementia Advisory Council.
We're going to take a few-minute break.
Commissioner, I apologize for interrupting your testimony.
No need to apologize. I'm glad to see you are doing just fine. Thank you. So I'll back up first. First bill I want to talk about is the Alzheimer's Disease Advisory Council. House Bill 6912 would establish a 14-member Alzheimer's Disease and Dementia Advisory Council within our department, including representatives from ADS, including our long-term care ombudsman program, and the Departments of Public Health and Social Services. The bill charges the council with looking at the needs of people living with Alzheimer's disease and dementia in the state, the services that are available, and our capacity to meet those needs. It also would develop a state Alzheimer's plan every four years and where we can make findings and recommendations. And it would be directed administratively by our dementia services coordinator in ADS. We wanted to let the committee know, you're probably likely aware, but much of the work that's contemplated in this bill is already being accomplished by the Connecticut Alzheimer's Disease and Related Dementia Coalition as part of a grant at DPH. In 2021, DPH received a grant from the CDC, building our largest dementia infrastructure, it's called BOLD, to develop a state plan. DPH has worked in partnership. They're great partners with us. They worked with the Connecticut chapter of the Alzheimer's Association to convene a statewide coalition, which now includes over 50 representatives and from approximately 40 organizations, including those that were involved in previous Alzheimer's disease planning efforts, the long-term care advisory board members, other state agencies, healthcare, nonprofit, community-based organizations. The Commission on Women, Children, Seniors, Equity, and Opportunity co-chaired the coalition's statewide coordination and policy work group, leading to the development of the five-year Connecticut state plan to address Alzheimer's disease and related dementias. So while we agree and support the committee's goal of ensuring that this important work is sustained beyond the life of the BOLD grant, the grant really provides us an opportunity to create that structure together, and the coalition is actively working on governance, what that could look like moving forward. It feels premature to establish another council at this point without fully knowing what that landscape will look like when the grant ends in two years. So in the meantime, our recommendation would be to delay action, but we, as always, are happy to work with the committee and our other partners to look at what those long-term sustainability efforts could look like. The second bill I want to speak about is the community ombudsman bill. We appreciate and fully support the committee raising Senate Bill 1280 to fix some inconsistencies in our statutory definitions for community ombudsman, which is housed within the incredible long-term care ombudsman office within our agency. By consistently referencing home and community-based long-term services and supports, we'll ensure that our community ombudsman program has wider jurisdiction to assist older adults and individuals with disabilities living outside of long-term care facilities, as was intended when this program was originally intended. And then finally, banning discrimination in long-term care. While the LGBTQ community has been seeing significant gains in civil rights over the past several decades, negative disparities unfortunately still exist at every stage. All people have the right to age with dignity. That's something that Aging and Disability supports, a message we give across the board: the right to age with dignity in a safe living environment free from discrimination. Therefore, ADS supports House Bill 6913, which would prohibit long-term care facilities or staff from discriminating against any resident on the basis of their actual or perceived sexual orientation, gender identity, or expression, or HIV status. In closing, we truly appreciate the committee's unwavering support of older adults here in the state of Connecticut. On behalf of ADS, I want to thank you for your time, consideration, and your ongoing support of our agency's mission, and we're happy to have further discussions on any of these proposals moving forward.
Thank you for your testimony, Commissioner. Are there any questions? Seeing none, we thank you very much for taking the time. We know it's a busy time.
Great. Thank you so much.
Next up is Mairead Painter, State Long-Term Care Ombudsman.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Senator Hockadell, Representative Garibay, Senator Semenera, Representative Bolinsky, and distinguished members of the Aging Committee. I'm Mairead Painter, the State Long-Term Care Ombudsman, and I'd like to testify on a few bills before you today. The first is 6912, an act establishing an Alzheimer's Disease Dementia Advisory Board. Alzheimer's disease and dementia affects thousands of Connecticut residents, placing significant burdens on individuals, families, caregivers, and the state's healthcare infrastructure. Establishing an advisory council dedicated to examining and addressing these challenges would further enhance the work that's already being done to assist individuals with Alzheimer's and dementia through the current pilot, or sorry, board that's working on it. However, I fully support the establishment of this council. I do have some concerns related to where it would sit and how it would sit there, because I'm always concerned if it's within a state agency, is that person going to be able to advocate fully on behalf of things that the council wants to bring forward that can limit that person's ability to do things at times. The next bill is an act, one, sorry, HB 6771, an act requiring healthcare insurance coverage for biomarker testing. I support the coverage of biomarker testing, especially through blood analysis, as a vital tool for early and accurate diagnosis of cognitive disorders, notably Alzheimer's disease. This significant improvement in diagnostic precision is critical for our residents, enabling them to have timely and appropriate interventions. Next, I'd like to testify on SB 1279, an act concerning nursing home staffing ratios. I support this as an essential need to ensure that residents receive the quality of care and attention they deserve. The federal recommendations from CMS have long supported staffing requirements of 4.1 hours of direct care per resident per day to prevent harm and ensure safety. The data is clear that higher staffing levels correlates with reduced hospitalizations, improved infection control measures, and better overall quality of life for residents. We're fortunate here in Connecticut to have so many skilled nursing facilities already meeting these minimum staffing levels. You can see in my submitted testimony, I've linked that CMS has reported that, for example, our nursing homes, through the Payroll-Based Journal, Nursing Quarter II of 2024, we had 197 nursing homes here in Connecticut report in. And of those 197 nursing homes, 186 reported that they're currently meeting the 3.0 total nursing hours per day. 36 reported that they are currently meeting 4.1 hours per day, and 102 reported that they're currently meeting the 3.6 total nursing hours per day. So again, the citation is there, so you can look at it directly. That is self-reported by the nursing homes. So we're already, the majority of our nursing homes are already at those levels. And again, this is a minimum staffing. I believe that the most important portion of this bill is the introduction of clear accountability measures for the homes that don't meet those high standards that we expect for the individuals we serve, ensuring that violations for staffing requirements are treated seriously with posting of citations and appropriate penalties. Lastly, SB 1280, an act concerning the responsibilities of the community ombudsman program, which works within the larger ombudsman program. The current language defining the community ombudsman program and outlining its scope has some inconsistencies, and addressing these inconsistencies and streamlining it to match the definitions used by other state agencies will ensure clarity and address the questions that might come up moving forward. Oh, excuse me. Also, I have HB 6913, an act concerning LGBTQ discrimination in long-term care facilities. I support this bill and as does our program because it ensures that all residents are treated with dignity, respect, and equality. My office has received cases related to discrimination, harassment, isolation, that are all faced by members of the LGBTQ+ community within skilled nursing facilities. This bill is more than a legal safeguard. It is a moral commitment to protecting some of our most historically marginalized individuals. The bill also promotes accountability and transparency by requiring facilities to post nondiscrimination policies and maintain accurate records of residents' identities, empowering them to report violations. Thank you for this opportunity to provide you a testimony today, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Actually, I had a list, but you've answered a lot of them already. Thank you so much. If you could envision where the advisory council would be, do you have an idea of where you think it might belong, or how we would achieve the goal that we're looking for?
Sure. So we have some wonderful long-term care, and I know you've attended some of the long-term care planning committees and long-term care advisory council. And within our state, that structure works very well because communities of individuals who advocate and support those things come together. And through legislation, there's a requirement that people are there, and then it goes into our long-term care plan. So if funding changed, at least if it was under those structures, I think it would give the, it would give it access and have the information be sure to be raised up and to go into both the long-term care advisory committee and then be brought up to the planning committee to ensure that we're looking at that throughout our long-term care projections.
Yeah, I had one more. But I'll go on. Representative Nolan? Representative Nolan?
Good afternoon. Thank you for coming before us today. Thank you, Madam Chair. Would SB 1280, you talked about inconsistencies. Would you elaborate a little bit on that?
Sure. Originally, in the definitions, some of the terminology that was used, I believe it says like home care, and I might get these wrong, home care provider, but then in describing the roles and responsibilities, it says home care agency. And the state has moved the other agencies to describing long-term services and supports, home and community-based long-term services and supports. And all of those things fall under that. So by using that broad term, it allows us to be able to support all of those individuals and making sure that the terminology is consistent in that language as well as in the DSS language where the home and community-based services live.
Okay. So it's better to use agencies versus provider, or?
It's better to use long-term care, home and community-based long-term services and supports, because that's the recognized federal language with DSS.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? I just have one more. Did I hear correctly that it's the actual nursing homes that report out through CMS and give us the numbers of the staffing that they have?
Yes, there's something called the Payroll-Based Journal that goes off of how, who is being paid by the nursing home for those periods of time, and they report that to CMS, and then CMS does a report that shows, breaks it down by nurse, by CNA, in each of those settings. So it's self-reported by the nursing homes, but there is a public release of that information.
All right. And did you mention how many nursing homes are at that level? Do we know how many?
Are at the level of?
3.6 or 3.5?
Yes. So at the level of, I can repeat that for you, we have 186 have reported that they're at 3.0. 36 reported they're at 4.1, which is really wonderful, our goal. And then 102 reported that they currently meet or exceed the 3.6. So that's the majority of, a good portion of the nursing homes here in our state already. Almost, it's over half.
Okay. Well, thank you for coming and testifying. I know everyone's running around. Oh, was there someone? Oh, no, that's okay. I didn't see you. That's good. Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm sorry, I was getting situated. So good to see you. It's always so good to see you. Thank you for all your hard work. You said that the staffing was self-reported. Is there, do you ever run into issues? Do you question the self-reporting, or does that seem to be working okay?
Well, it goes by payroll. So if they're paying the person, then my understanding is that's how it's collected because of the Payroll-Based Journal. So hopefully they're not just paying someone to not be there. I would expect that they're paying the person to be there and that they're in that role. That would be our expectation.
Yeah, thank you. And then for HB 6913, the concerning LGBTQ plus discrimination, you said that you get complaints. Could you just give some examples of the complaints?
Sure. Sometimes we've had complaints where an individual may, and some of this has been fixed with the W-10. We have a form that's used. But if someone arrives from the hospital, maybe transgender and be assigned a room, if that's not communicated well, how that is communicated within the nursing home, what that experience is for that individual from the time they enter the nursing home until they're situated in that room, making sure that there's protections for them, it's really important that the staff have good education to know how to respond to that. I believe that the nursing homes have good intentions there, but making sure that that information is provided so that everyone feels included in their community, that the communities are inclusive of everyone, to be their authentic self and be able to have the experience there that they should be able to have when being treated for an illness or their well-being.
Thank you. And then that, this bill also states discrimination against the HIV diagnosis, which I started 40 years ago when the HIV/AIDS epidemic was starting. I mean, it was right when I was in nursing school, and now, thank goodness, it's so much better. I don't see that being a problem, just in my small little circle of what I do. So I'm just curious if you still feel that there is discrimination in the long-term care facilities with a diagnosis of HIV?
We, I have not received reports on that. I can't speak to individual, what they've experienced, but has not, that has not been brought to my attention. We do have a long, one long-term care community here in Connecticut that specifically supports individuals with HIV, and they're known for doing a wonderful job in the way that they support them. But otherwise, it hasn't come to my, that specific instance hasn't come to my attention.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, State Representative Shannon? Okay, Michael Werner? Okay, we'll come back to them. Senator Jeff Gordon? Lynda Senza? Rachel Simon? Rachel, go ahead.
Hi. Is my camera on?
We can hear you and it's your name.
Okay. Well, I don't know, if you'd like to see my face, it's available if you can turn it on on the back end. Thanks to the members of the Aging Committee. I come to you by Zoom in support of HB 6913. My name is Rachel Simon, as you can see on your screen, and I seem like a spy because of the 007. I use she and they pronouns, and I serve as the Executive Director of Triangle Community Center in Norwalk. We are a provider of community support and services, resources for the LGBTQIA+ community in Fairfield County and beyond. TCC has a group of LGBTQIA+ seniors who meet here regularly. They would prefer that I call them our ambassadors instead of seniors or elders. They're very active. The group is so popular that we're expanding the number of times it meets each month. This is a growing population in need of support, and I'm happy to help advocate for their needs. In considering this proposal, I think about queer and trans folks who aren't able to live authentically as they enter the care of others. My generation of Connecticut queer individuals are less likely to have children than our straight peers and are less likely to have younger advocates. The state can provide some additional protections for this multiply marginalized population. We need to protect people who are assigned transphobic roommates, who are already isolated by the challenges of aging and now have to defend their marginalized identities. People who are living with HIV, people who need access to gender-affirming care, people who are in religiously affiliated care and need additional protections, and those who are facing challenges of aging that are exacerbated by their queer and trans identities. One individual I'm thinking of who would benefit from this proposal is a community member in the TCC Care Coordination Program. They're a transgender senior who isn't out to many people in their life as trans. They rely on us at TCC to purchase their incontinence supplies because their caregivers don't understand that they need adult diapers that align with their plumbing and not their gender identity and expression. It is a service we are happy to provide, but it highlights how the basic needs of aging, of the aging population can be more of a challenge for queer and trans folks. Having protections for LGBTQIA+ elders and long-term care facilities is the right thing to do. It will enable people to live authentically. It will increase longevity because we know that people who do not feel seen and understood by healthcare providers have worse health outcomes. For example, how can we expect a person to follow medication instructions from a provider who can't even get their name or pronouns right? It's also important to have a reporting mechanism in place so that the burden of reporting and resolution doesn't fall on the impacted resident alone. We don't want someone living with dementia to have to find an attorney to represent them and follow through on documenting a problem. Training and implementation of best practices in the care of LGBTQIA+ elders for the staff of long-term care facilities will lead to fewer behavioral challenges and lessen the burden on the staff. There will be less confusion, self-harm, isolation, and medical noncompliance. Implementing this policy will improve the quality of life for folks at their most vulnerable. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to field any questions.
Thank you so much, Rachel. Are there any questions? Again, thank you, Rachel. Next is Representative Shannon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon to Chairs Garibay and Hockadell, and ranking members Huang and Bolinsky, and esteemed members of the Aging Committee. I'm M.J. Shannon. Representative M.J. Shannon, I'm here today to express my full support for House Bill 6913, a critical piece of legislation that promotes standards of care that are inclusive of the LGBTQ+ elders. This bill represents a strong commitment to equality in our state and reflects the values we all share, that every elder in Connecticut deserves to age with dignity and the safety they deserve. The current generation of LGBTQ+ elders is the first to benefit from marriage equality and related civil rights protections. However, despite these advances, many are still faced with the difficulty, the difficult reality of having to hide their identities when they enter long-term care. They may be forced to deny their relationships with the people they love, or even face the indignity of being separated from their spouses and care settings. This is not acceptable. After a lifetime of service to others, they deserve access to care that does not discriminate based on their LGBTQ+ identity or HIV status. For too long, LGBTQ+ elders have experienced unique barriers in accessing equality care. Many of them are estranged from biological family members and have endured discrimination throughout their lives, especially in healthcare settings prior to the establishment of civil rights protections. In many cases, they rely on chosen families and relationships within the LGBTQ+ community for support, as they have no children or close biological family to help them through their golden years. These elders have often experienced neglect, isolation, and lack of understanding because of their sexual orientation or gender identity. This results in a deep sense of mistrust in healthcare institutions. To improve their experiences and outcomes, we must ensure that healthcare providers and facilities create welcoming, affirming, and knowledgeable environments. Inclusive long-term care policies are not just the right thing to do, they are essential to improving care. By implementing LGBTQ+ inclusive policies, we can provide more personalized care, better mental health outcomes, and a greater sense of security for those who may otherwise feel marginalized. Educating healthcare providers about LGBTQ+ issues and establishing inclusive practices will create environments where every person feels seen, heard, and valued. This can enhance trust, patient satisfaction, and overall well-being. I want to thank the Aging Committee for bringing this bill to a public hearing, and I urge you to support it as we continue to prioritize the development of inclusive care for all elders. Every person deserves to live their final years with dignity, comfort, and respect. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Representative. Are there any questions?
Senator Merks? Thank you, Representative Shannon. I co-introduced a similar bill in public health, LGBTQ Bill of Rights for Long-Term Care and Assisted Living Facilities. And, because I've seen it many, many times, the discrimination, and I don't know if it's discrimination, but just the ignorance, maybe, I would call, I think my heart wants to just call it ignorance. But with the current federal, you know, with the current federal adminis, you know, federal adminis, you know, administration and with the fear that same-sex marriage might no longer exist and with DEI programs being eliminated. Was that a catalyst, do you think, to being, the need for this? And then, you know, and if you've talked to any seniors in your district that identify as queer, is that a catalyst of what's happening? Because to the people I have, I mean, there's some people that even, you know, are afraid to say "they" or won't say "they."
Right.
And they actually put pronouns now on W10s, which is amazing. I never thought in my career I'd ever see that. So I don't know if you've had any interaction with any seniors that are even more fearful now that they're not going to be able to have those that they love come to visit them when they're in long-term care facilities.
Yeah, thank you so much for that question, Senator Marks. I think it really is, we're living in this time where these are rights that for years now have been guaranteed and we thought were going to hold strong. And as I said in my testimony, these elders were the ones fighting for this equality. And now, we, they have to, they go into these care facilities and they're not treated equally. And it just is not right. And when it comes to people in my district or just elders that I've heard from, we're hearing that there are some that have to move. I heard the other day, someone, a resident had to literally go to New York instead of finding a facility here and things like that. And I think with the rise of the hate and just what's going on with our community, we are going to probably be seeing more of that. And it is a time where this, these types of policies need to come into place. They need to be put into statute just so residents know that we are protecting them and all the way through their years of life. So, thank you for that question.
Yeah, and I am, in my, in my profession, I've met with many. I had a trans client and she was one of the first people to transition where she was even on the Phil Donahue Show, and, which was pretty awesome. And I, she would just tell me so many stories. Or, you know, even just getting the question, "Do you have children that live nearby?" Because they're, back in the old days, people got married and had children, right? And unless you had a fertility problem, you probably had a child. And even just that question can make people feel so marginalized and that they're just not in the norm and like everybody else. So thank you for your advocacy. Thank you for being up here in Hartford.
Yes.
And it's great to see you.
Thank you, Senator.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, thank you so much, Representative.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next is Senator Gordon, please.
Yes, good afternoon. Chairs of the committee, vice chairs, ranking members, members. I'm State Senator Jeff Gordon, proud to represent the 35th District up in Northeast and part of North Central Connecticut. I hope you're doing well. I'm here to testify in favor of House Bill 6771, which is an act requiring health insurance coverage for biomarker testing. And I get during my testimony to wear not only a state senator hat, but my doctor hat. And I can tell you that more and more, the use of biomarkers to diagnose, even sometimes to screen for various diseases and cancers, to help guide treatment and to help guide survivorship care, is really a standard of care that is rapidly evolving just beyond, not just beyond what is considered traditional things like cancer care, but we see that now in heart care, diabetes care, rheumatology care, a whole gamut of types of medical situations that we're dealing with. And it's very important with that standard of care that we keep up to make certain that insurances are covering this type of care. Because more and more, the care that's provided to people in Connecticut and around the country is individualized. And these types of tests very much can zero in on particular factors, sometimes just to one person or one family that can have a big difference in making decisions about to do a treatment, what type of treatment, and sometimes even to pick things up at a later time that needs to be reassessed and re-treated before someone even knows that there might be a problem. So it is really much a patient care access issue when insurances do not cover certain tests that we know people need and need in a timely manner. And that's why I'm a strong supporter and have been for quite some time of efforts to make certain that biomarker testing, when it's medically appropriate and decided by a healthcare professional to be medically appropriate, is covered and people aren't denied the care, no matter what the reason might be needed for the biomarker test. So to me, this is a common sense bill. I appreciate very much your committee taking this up. I thank you for that, and I encourage you to support it. And I noted that there's a lot of testimony on this bill and a lot of support. So I look forward to seeing this move through the committee and then out to the House and the Senate, and hopefully we'll get it passed this year.
Thank you, Senator. Do you believe that by using the biomarker and diagnosing earlier that people will live longer, not longer, but healthier lives, which in the end saves a ton of money?
Yes, very much so. I see that every day in my care of patients. In fact, I'm at my hospital office today, and there were at least a couple of people that I've ordered biomarker testers for that are important to decide about their treatment. So not only for some of these diseases can people live longer, but they can also at the same time have an improved quality of life, a better functioning status, which means they can do what they need to do to take care of family, to be working for many of these people. But at the same time, if we're able to intervene early or better than otherwise we could because of biomarker test results, we get better outcomes. And in the long run, we very much do save money. And it's just more than money. It's also making a huge positive impact in people's lives, which is just as important as what we can do in the long run to save healthcare costs and keep people healthy.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else that wants to comment? Thank you so much for taking the time to come today.
Thank you for taking the time to let me testify.
Lynda Senza. Okay, Rachel Simon. Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. Natalie Queen.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good afternoon, Madam Chairman, Chairwoman and committee members. My name is Natalie Queen. I'm here to have a testimony for HB 6771, an act requiring insurance coverage for biomarker testing. It was May 2017, Mother's Day weekend. We spent the weekend in Washington, DC to celebrate my daughter's graduation from Howard University. My younger brother, Chris, asked me to go with him to a doctor's appointment on Monday, May 15, 2017. He was having an endoscopy. He said that he had, he had lost a lot of weight and was not able to hold food down. Sometimes swallowing beverages were an issue for him. They would get stuck in his throat and he'd have to regurgitate. He was scheduled an endoscopy. Of course, being the only sister, I went with Chris to his appointment. When the scope was done, the doctor came in and said to Chris, "The good news, the news is not good." I looked up because I was reading. The doctor said I was not able to do a full endoscopy because I could not get the scope down all the way. He said, "Your stomach is hard like leather," called a leather stomach. My brother and I listened. The doctor said, "You have stomach cancer." I almost lost it, but looking at my brother, it gave me the strength to continue to listen to what the doctor had said. The doctor explained what he would do to treat my brother. He talked about an aggressive form of chemo treatment and then remove his stomach completely. We were told that treatment should start ASAP because the stomach was hard and it was probably at stage four cancer. This was a lot for Chris and I. I went to the lobby and cried. How could my younger brother have cancer? He is the healthiest of us three, because I have an older brother as well. He ate right. He exercised. He did all that he could to keep himself healthy for himself and his two kids. We left the office and on the way back to his place, I promised that I would not tell anyone, especially Mom, because he promised, he made me promise not to tell her mother. On the way back to Connecticut, I was on the phone with my sister chatting and crying. My brother Googled all the information that he could find on stomach cancer. He thought he had throat cancer. So a new search began for him. He talked with his pastor and decided to get treatment at Memorial Sloan-Kettering. Chris went to Memorial Sloan and tests were run. And within two weeks, Chris started chemo. They started with chemo treatments. The medicine increased as his treatments were monitored. Scans were performed to monitor his treatments. The first two months, the cancer had not spread. After the first couple of months, they noticed a growth on his intestine and tests confirmed that his cancer started moving. Chemo treatments were increased with continual monitoring. A few months later, his cancer was still not getting better. The hospital talked with Chris and immunotherapy treatments began. Chris said, "Let's go for it," even though there was not a lot of information on immunotherapy at that time. His treatment started and the immunotherapy looked like it was working at first. A few months later, more bad news was given. The cancer spread to other organs. Chris did several rounds of chemo and immunotherapy. Nothing seemed to stop the cancer. The second week of November 2018, my brother left a chemo treatment. And that was, and then he was rushed back to Memorial Sloan Urgent Care. The doctor called me on the phone and said that he looked like a Holocaust survivor because he was nothing but skin and bones. My family and I rushed to New York to be by Chris's side. He was able to get fluids through an IV, which helped him respond a little. After being assigned a room, he spoke with his patient care team and he expressed that his concerns were not being heard during his months of chemo and immunotherapy. And that is partially why he is in this state of his life. My brother was not getting better and the doctors talked to him about the cancer spreading to his organs. And that, excuse me, and that was not much help for what else can be done. My brother decided what he wanted to do was to go to hospice care. This is where he spent the last two months of his life. He never stayed a night alone. There was always a friend or family member who stayed with him. The morning that he had a conversation would be about not wanting to live the rest of his life like this anymore, I was devastated. I had to speak with the doctors about his choice to end his life. So his fluids were decreased and slowly, my brother passed away. On January 20, 2019, my brother took his last breath. Why is this, why is my story different from others that you will hear? I am not sure that it is, because cancer is cancer and it's terrible. But it is different for me. My brother had to die so that I could live. He was diagnosed too late and I carry the CDH1 gene. I have a daughter who was a jelly to my brother's peanut butter. I choose to live. My CDH1 choices are to be tested every year, where I get 80 to 100 samples of my stomach removed to monitor the cancer. Why so many, do you ask? Because this cancer forms in the lining of my stomach and not in a tumor form. When the cancer shows itself, it is already in stage two, three, or four. It is one of the least funded cancers in the world. Why test early? Because I choose to live. I don't want to have my stomach removed, so I choose to have these yearly testing. It isn't easy because I fear every day that if I have something wrong with my stomach, my first thought is the cancer has formed. I think about Chris every day and wish that he was here with us. He died so that me and my older brother could live. And I choose to live, and so does my older brother. Please support HB 6771, an act requiring insurance coverage for biomarker testing. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Natalie, and for coming and telling us your story. Does anyone have a question? We agree that it's very important. And again, with the biomarker, there's early diagnosis. And it means that many cases that the disease can be captured and, you know, either cured or whatever. But thank you for having the courage to come and testify today.
Thank you for having me.
Melissa Combs.
Good afternoon, Senator Hockadel, Representative Garabey, and distinguished members of the Aging Committee. My name is Melissa Combs and I'm the co-chair of the LGBTQ+ Justice and Opportunity Network. I am here today testifying in support of HB 6913, an act concerning LGBTQ+ discrimination in long-term care facilities. This bill is an important extension of the state's commitment to protecting everyone, including LGBTQ+ people. I am the proud parent of a transgender child. My spouse and I have worked very hard over many years to understand and support them. We have worked with clinicians, teachers, and other parents to make sure their needs are met and that they have the opportunity to grow, thrive, and realize their dreams alongside their peers. This has been a deeply personal journey for our family. Through this process, I have met several members of the LGBTQ+ community of all ages who helped us understand and support my child. Today, I testify in strong support of our LGBTQ+ elders who are in or seeking long-term care. As a parent, my highest priority is making sure my child has everything they need to flourish and to build a community on their own terms. As I see them growing up, I imagine them as an adult living a long and full life and aging with grace and dignity, surrounded by loving people who care for them. My greatest hope is that they will live a long, good time as an LGBTQ+ elder. When my child is older, I want them to have the care they deserve. This bill will help both providers and patients better understand one another. It ensures that the rights of LGBTQ+ people, as expressed in our nondiscrimination laws, are fully respected and realized. It moves us closer as a state to ensuring everyone here has the right and ability to age with dignity, surrounded by their loved ones and community. It makes sure LGBTQ+ people are empowered to seek the care they need as they age. Thank you for supporting our HB 6913.
Thank you so much, Melissa, for coming before us. Does anyone have any questions? Anyone online? No? Thank you so much. Is Marie Allen here?
Yes, I am. Good afternoon, Senator Hockadel, Representative Garabey, Vice Chair Senator Miller, Representative Fortier, and ranking members Senator Huang and Representative Bolinski. My name is Marie Allen. I represent one of the five area agencies on aging under the umbrella name of Aging CT. I'm here to testify in support of Senate Bill 6911, increasing the asset limit for individuals in Medicaid. This is a wonky subject compared to the other testimony we've heard today. And some of my colleagues will be offering testimony for those other items as you get through the agenda. But this is a really important look at how one becomes eligible for the wonderful Connecticut Home Care Program that offers older adults an alternative to nursing home placement. No one wakes up one morning and says, "I think I need home care services." No one wakes up in the morning and says, "I think I'll spend down to $1,600 in my savings account so I can qualify for Medicaid." What happens is, and we see it in our neighborhoods, we see our aging neighbors go through a continuum and little by little, they are less able to meet the activities of daily living and take care of their homes and take care of themselves. Connecticut is so wonderful in the creation of that Connecticut Home Care Program, which offers a full menu of nursing, home care, adult day center, transportation, home-delivered meals, everything an individual may need to manage themselves in the home, in the community, and forego institutional placement. We know this is where most of our older adults want to be. And we also know that it saves the state money because they are not paying the higher institutional rates for room and board, along with all their home care services. The $1,600 asset limit was set in 1973. A New York Times article from '73 cites the average rent at $108 a month as compared to today's average rent of $1,957. By setting that asset limit so low, $1,600, By setting that asset limit so low, $1,600, residents who are on Medicaid, receiving that Connecticut Home Care Program for elders, don't even have a one-month cushion in emergency expense. Many of these individuals still own a home. They may need a furnace repair, a roof repair. Even when you're on Medicaid, you have very low reimbursement for things like eyeglasses and hearing aids. If you lose your glasses or they get destroyed somehow, you cannot purchase that second pair of glasses. You simply don't have the money. So, home care for low-income individuals or for residents who have outspent their resources starts with that Connecticut Home Care Program. The Medicaid eligibility must be increased so people feel as though they have a little bit of savings for the emergency and still benefit from the home care services and all of the support of their health care that Medicaid brings. I ask you all to support Senate Bill 6911. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie. Are there any questions? I just also want to add, I don't have a question, but a thank you from all of us, all that you do, and the area agencies on aging. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Joseph Stango.
Good afternoon, Senator Hockadell, Representative Garabey, Ranking Members Huang and Bolinski, and other distinguished members of the Aging Committee. My name is Joseph Daniel Stango, and I serve as a senior program manager at AIDS United, which is a national nonprofit organization committed to ending the HIV epidemic in the United States. I was born and raised in Waterbury, and I currently live in Southbury. I'm here today in strong support of HB 6913 and act concerning LGBTQ+ discrimination in long-term care facilities. In all things, we ought to be guided by principles that preserve, cultivate, and elevate the dignity of all people, especially those who require additional support to fully flourish. During my tenure in public health, I've witnessed environments where these principles are upheld, and unfortunately, environments where they are not. Too often, our LGBTQ+ elders, particularly those living with HIV, are forced to hide who they are just to receive basic care. Make no mistake, such environments are not just unwelcoming, they are harmful. HB 6913 offers a critical opportunity to ensure that LGBTQ+ elders receive the respect and care that they deserve, free from fear or discrimination. To zoom in just a little bit, Connecticut has over 10,000 folks living with HIV, 50% of whom are aged 50 or older. Many of these individuals face stigma, not only because of their sexual orientation or gender, but also because of this HIV status. The stigma contributes to delays in treatment, social isolation, and poorer overall health outcomes, especially when that care is provided in settings that historically have not been equipped to support the unique needs of these long-term survivors. As is a component of this bill, providers really must be trained to understand both the medical and emotional needs of these individuals, just as they are for any other group with specific care considerations. We know that long-term care facilities function best when they are built on trust, respect, and cultural humility. That is why this bill is necessary. With HB 6913, Connecticut will continue to reinforce its longstanding bipartisan commitment to protecting vulnerable elders and affirm that discrimination has no place in our care facilities. Without it, too many LGBTQ+ elders and people living with HIV will continue to experience fear, neglect, and harm in the very spaces meant to support them. I urge this committee to pass this bill and take a stand for dignity, equity, and compassionate care. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Joseph. That was awesome. Thank you for coming. I know I learned a few things that I didn't know, so that helps us in, you know, our crusade. Is there any, Rep. Bolinski?
Mr. Stango, thank you so much. Very well stated.
Thank you, sir.
Very, very well stated. You know, one of the things that is difficult to accomplish in lawmaking is legislating people's behavior. What Senator Marks said a little bit earlier was really very significant. Thanks, thanks to people like you that articulate well. The problem of ignorance, to, I think, a larger degree than intolerance. You know, there's light at the end of the tunnel, so you should continue your message. It was stated in a very, very, very considerate and well-informed way. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Maureen McIntyre? I don't see Maureen here. Ginny Hanbridge?
Good afternoon. Senator Hockadell, Representative Garabey, and distinguished members of the Aging Committee. My name is Ginny Hanbridge, and I'm the executive director for the Alzheimer's Association Connecticut Chapter. Thank you for this opportunity to comment in support of the following bills: Raised Bill 6771, an act requiring health insurance coverage for biomarker testing; and Raised Bill 6912, an act establishing an Alzheimer's Disease and Dementia Advisory Council. Our first comment on 6771. The Alzheimer's Association is very proud to support this bill as part of the ACS-CAN Coalition, along with other well-respected organizations. This coalition represents the best interests of all families here in Connecticut who are dealing with a devastating disease and the impact it has on our families. On a personal note, I lost both my parents to cancer, and I believe an earlier diagnosis would have had an impact on their quality of life and the choices that they had for treatment and care. And for the 80,000-plus people in Connecticut living with Alzheimer's disease and other dementia, an early and accurate diagnosis of Alzheimer's can have a significant impact on their lives. Almost every day, I hear from families about how hard it is to receive an early and accurate diagnosis, and that it can be a very grueling process. Now that there are FDA-approved treatments available to those in the early stage of this disease and many more being developed, early detection and diagnosis of Alzheimer's is even more critical to ensure individuals receive the most benefit at the earliest point of this disease progression. This provides individuals and their families with the critical time they need to plan for the future, access care and support services, and reduce the financial impact of the disease, and simply to live and love. The current FDA-approved biomarker methods, when applicable, can be used to aid in the diagnosis of people with symptoms of Alzheimer's or another dementia, but they are often used when the disease has already progressed. We are greatly encouraged by the promising research of other methods, such as blood tests and genetic risk profiles that can potentially identify a person's risk before any symptoms are even presented. This changing landscape in treatment, along with lifestyle interventions, and access to early diagnosis gives us solid hope that we can change the trajectory of this disease for our families here in Connecticut and across the country. As part of the coalition of the many organizations that support this concept, we respectfully request the bill be amended to ensure access for the purposes of diagnosis, treatment, appropriate management, or ongoing monitoring of a patient's disease or condition when the test is supported by medical and scientific evidence. Additionally, this amended language will provide flexibility towards future innovations and applications. And now I'm going to comment briefly on the Alzheimer's Disease and Dementia Advisory Council. I've been with the Alzheimer's Association for almost six years now, and I have been greatly encouraged by our state's focus on Alzheimer's and other dementia as an important public health issue. As a result of receiving the grant award from the CDC, the Connecticut Department of Health, Public Health, has worked in partnership with us, the Alzheimer's Association of Connecticut, to convene a Dementia, Alzheimer's Disease, and Related Disorders Coalition to assist in the statewide strategic planning. This has resulted in an updated statewide plan, which was published in 2023. And it is true, the coalition meets on a regular basis and includes over 50 representatives from approximately 40 organizations. Now, while this group is an important part of our implementation of the state plan, we do believe that the best-practice model that several other states have implemented, an advisory council, is essential to keeping the state plan an important priority for our state. We strongly support the bill as designating advisory council brings a smaller group of relevant agencies and private sector stakeholders together for the purpose of identifying our state-specific needs and making policy recommendations as identified in the state plan. In short, we need people to keep this moving and make sure that it continues to be a priority, no matter whether we get funding from the CDC or not. I want to thank you all for allowing me the opportunity to provide comments today. I'm happy to answer any questions, and this testimony has been submitted this morning. Thank you.
Thank you for coming today and sharing your insight into these two bills. Are there any questions? Seeing none, we thank you.
Thank you.
Next is William Murray. Mag Morelli?
Good afternoon. Senator Hockadell, Representative Garabey, Representative Bolinski, and distinguished members of the Aging Committee. My name is Mag Morelli. I'm the president of Leading Age Connecticut, statewide membership association representing not-for-profit and mission-driven provider organizations serving older adults across the continuum of aging services. I want to thank you for this opportunity to testify in several bills before you today, and I'll go quickly. First of all, House Bill 6913, Leading Age Connecticut, fully supports equal access and similar protections for older adults who are members of the LGBTQ+ community. Privacy protections regarding HIV status are also something we strongly defend. We therefore support this raised bill, which seeks to reiterate these rights in the nursing home and managed residential community. We note that the language of the bill seems very similar to a law recently passed in the state of New York, and we were hopeful that this bill is being considered now as a preemptive measure and that the members of the LGBTQ+ community were currently not facing discrimination in the Connecticut's aging services sector. So we were disheartened to hear Murray's testimony. There are currently several state and federal regulations, laws, and practices that do protect these rights and protect the privacy of an individual's HIV status, including the nursing home bill of rights and the MRC bill of rights that you have here in the state of Connecticut. And we're hoping that the ombudsman was able to use those tools when she did receive complaints. We also have testimony supporting House Bill 6771, an act requiring health insurance coverage for biomarker testing; and House Bill 6912, an act establishing an Alzheimer's Disease and Dementia Advisory Council. And we've also provided supportive testimony on a House Bill 6911, an act concerning asset limits for Husky C beneficiaries. However, we must oppose Senate Bill 1279, an act concerning nursing home staffing ratios. While we share the state's goal to ensure Connecticut's older adults receive quality nursing home care and understand that maintaining appropriate staffing levels is essential to achieving that goal, we object to the proposal to create separate and specific minimum ratios of staff based on licensure and certification status that's contained in the bill. We also object to the proposal to remove the ability to proportionately adjust social work staffing hours to the number of residents in the building. The bill proposes to increase the minimum daily staffing ratio in two phases, but also specifically assign separate minimums for RNs, licensed practical nurses, and certified nurse aides. We strongly objecting to creating these very specific ratios based on licensure and certification. It's contrary to the philosophy and intent of the state's nursing home acuity rate system, as well as federal and the state public health code's requirements that a nursing home staff to meet the needs of the residents. One prescribed staffing level does not meet all needs. In addition, the ratios will work against various high-quality nursing home staffing models that may rely upon a high level of licensed staff, including a high level of RNs. And finally, this proposal will be costly to even well-staffed nursing homes that may need to hire additional staff to meet the new ratios. And the lack of flexibility within the ratios will expose quality, well-staffed nursing homes to potentially costly penalties if they struggle to find coverage at that specific licensure or certification level for last-minute staff absences. In addition, requiring the use of LPNs would be a new requirement placed on nursing homes and may force some nursing homes to replace RNs with LPNs. Similarly, a specific ratio of CNAs may force some homes to displace licensed nursing staff to meet the certified staff requirements. Requiring specific ratios will thwart the ability to develop staffing patterns that address the individualized needs of residents, and addressing individualized needs is the goal of person-centered care planning and the state's acuity-based Medicaid rate system. As Murray said, there are many nursing homes already staffing well above the 3.0 minimum standard, but many would be negatively impacted by the enactment of these specific ratios, and we ask the committee not to move forward with this proposal. We thank you for this opportunity to submit testimony and for your consideration of our opinion, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions? Can you just clarify? Because what I'm hearing is not so much the staffing ratio, it's making it specific. Because if everybody's already at 3.5 to 4.1 is what I hear, that shouldn't be an issue. It's more the specifics of it.
Yes, it's more the specifics of a certain number of, a ratio of CNAs, a certain ratio of LPNs, and a certain ratio of RNs.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And thank you for coming.
Right, thank you.
Yes, Michael Werner? D W C S E O. Yay, Michael.
Good afternoon, Senator Hockadell, Representative Garabey, Senator Huang, Representative Bolinski, Senator Miller, Representative Fortier, and other distinguished members of the Aging Committee. My name is Michael Werner. I'm the lead aging policy analyst for the Commission on Women, Children, Seniors, Equity, and Opportunity, and I'm joined by my colleague Megan Baker, who will introduce herself in a moment. And we are here to testify in support of Senate Bills 1280, an act concerning the Responsibility Committee ombudsman, House Bill 6771, an act requiring health insurance coverage for biomarker testing, 6911, an act concerning asset limits for Husky C, and 6912, an act establishing an Alzheimer's Disease and Dementia Advisory Council. So, in addition to my role on the commission as the lead aging policy analyst, I'm also the statewide co-chair of the Alzheimer's Disease and Related Dementia Policy Committee of the ADRD Coalition. And the state of Connecticut has been very wise in the last few years to help understand and recognize the needs of dementia in our state with our growing aging population. There's about 80,000-plus folks in our state who are suffering from this. And these bills, in particular surrounding Alzheimer's, build on the work that we've already been doing, including the creation of the Dementia Care Coordinator, which is something that we supported strongly, and we are grateful for the creation of that. And last year, the legislature passed Senate Bill 307, which became public Act 2450, helping to make sure that biomarker testing would be available to folks on Medicaid, and this bill would help to bring parity. We are mostly interested in making sure that there's a clarifying language to make sure it's evidence-based and medically necessary. Regarding the ombudsman bill, we support it. It's just ten Regarding the ombudsman bill, we support it's just technical changes. And regarding the Husky C, that is, you know, that 1600 rate is it's been established since the 1970s, and that might have been nice in 1974, but it's not so nice right now. So I'm going to turn it over to Megan, who has some more to say.
Thank you, Michael. My name's Megan Baker. I'm the Lead Asian American Pacific Islander Policy Analyst for the Commission on Women, Children, Seniors Equity and Opportunity, and I just want to bolster the testimony with the perspective and support of the AAPI community. More than half of Asian Americans believe that memory loss or a steep dip in thinking and learning skills is just a natural part of the aging process, but this causes a lot of missed signs of Alzheimer's disease, and there's a lack of education and awareness around this. And so it's a growing concern for everyone, but especially potent in the AAPI community. And experts project that Alzheimer's will triple among the Asian American cohort by the year 2030. So we appreciate the efforts of the committee to establish through this bill a dedicated Alzheimer's Advisory Council that can help streamline services, coordinate education and awareness. And we see that the bill calls for council membership of those with lived experiences, and we just recommend that this opportunity really be used to include the diverse perspectives of residents from our AAPI communities, African American and Latino Puerto Rican, to really ensure that we encompass the true essence and diversity of the state and that these are reflected in the work and recommendations and outcomes of the Alzheimer's Advisory Council. Thank you.
Thank you so much, both. Are there any questions? Rep. Bolinsky.
Just just a comment, Madam Chair. I just want to thank you two and the entire alphabet salad for all of the support that you guys apply to aging. You've been a big part of our our committee's driving force over the past couple of years, and it's very, very much appreciated.
Well, thank you very much, Rep. Bolinsky. And in the additional capacity I have as the Long-Term Care Advisory Council, it's been our delight to host you at our meetings. We will continue to be doing so. We appreciate all of your leadership and guidance on these very important issues. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, great. Esteemed members of the Aging Committee, my name is Linda Alderman, and I live in West Hartford. I'm a former administrative attorney and a two-time survivor of breast cancer, as well as a survivor of a rare disease. I've been a legislative advocate on behalf of cancer and rare disease patients for over a decade to help improve the lives of those who follow in my medical footsteps. Today, I'm testifying in support of proposed House Bill 6771, an act requiring health insurance coverage for biomarker testing, and I thank you for the opportunity. I was devastated to see the pathology report after my double mastectomy in 2008 because it stated that my malignant tumor was two and a half centimeters, and the standard of care for any size over two centimeters was chemotherapy. The prospect of receiving chemotherapy is terrifying for the reasons we all know, but I had another reason to be afraid of chemo, and that was because I was still recovering from a rare disease, Cushing's syndrome, and its delayed diagnosis had caused significant cognitive impairment. I had been an environmental attorney for 20 years, but Cushing's had caused memory loss and impacted my speech and processing so profoundly that I had become disabled from the practice of law. I knew that I would probably never recover all of my lost brain function, but there was hope that I would recover some of it. My oncologists, however, confirmed my greatest fear about chemotherapy. If I received it, my cognitive impairment would most likely be permanent, and chemo could cause significant additional damage to my cognitive and processing functions. At the time, I was 45 years old with two young sons. But I was extremely fortunate. Instead of immediately being given a one-size-fits-all chemo treatment, I received a biomarker test that analyzed the tissue of my tumor and determined the best course of treatment for me. Thankfully, the biomarker test results showed that I had a very low risk of recurrence, that I would not benefit from chemotherapy, and that the surgery I already had plus hormonal therapy was the best course of treatment for me. I am here today physically and cognitively able to advocate on behalf of this biomarker bill only because a biomarker test spared me from receiving a chemotherapy treatment that I not only didn't need, but that could have permanently impaired my brain. There are patients who could benefit from biomarker testing who don't have access to it because their private health insurance won't cover the tests they need. This seems counterintuitive to me because biomarker testing could lead to a significant cost savings for health insurers. In my case, the biomarker test not only saved my health insurer from the cost of chemotherapy, but also from all of the other costs for future health care I most likely would have needed for medical and behavioral care, as well as occupational therapy and lifelong care if my cognitive function had been permanently and/or further impaired. This bill will not only open the door to treatment that can save lives, but could provide a significant cost savings to insurance companies. I hope that you will look favorably upon the proposed bill. I thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Linda, and thank you for sharing your story and your journey with cancer. Are there any questions? No, thank you so much for coming and testifying.
Thank you.
Karen Martin.
Good afternoon, Senator Hockadel, Representative Garabey, and distinguished members of the Aging Committee. My name is Karen Martin. I am the co-founder of the newly-formed East Haven Pride, and I am here today in support of House Bill 6913, an act concerning LGBTQ discrimination in long-term care. I have worked in the healthcare field for 47 years, since I was 18 years old. My career began working as a nurse's aide, first in a county rehabilitation center and long-term nursing facility in Pennsylvania, later at a local rehabilitation and long-term nursing center. At the time, Alzheimer's disease was just becoming officially recognized. We who did the job of long-term caregivers in the nursing facilities were on the forefront and took the lead of the Alzheimer's patient care, who were often younger than the other patients, more frustrated, and just as strong and physically able as any 55-year-old. Yet we never treated the patient with anything but kindness and understanding, even though we did not know exactly what we were dealing with. Later, I attended South Central Community College, now known as Gateway Community College, and graduated as a radiologic technologist. When I first worked in this capacity in the mid-'80s, it was the onset of the AIDS crisis. The medical community did not know what to expect at that point in terms of how the disease was transmitted. It was difficult to see how the patients were required to be treated then, so isolated and alone. As we learned more, we adopted new ways of treating all patients. We treat each exactly the same with no need to separate and isolate patients diagnosed with AIDS or HIV or AIDS-related illnesses. In my experience, in my field, that is how we still operate. Every patient is treated equal, called university, I'm sorry, universal precautions, a proven method of safety, caring for all patients. There is no need for discrimination. I have been disturbed to learn that members of the LGBTQ plus community in Connecticut have reported isolation, discrimination, and harassment from fellow long-term care facility residents and staff, resulting in substandard care in those facilities. As a member of the LGBTQ community who is approaching retirement and perhaps at some time finding myself in need of long-term care facilities, I am concerned about being treated poorly because of who I love. Legislation is needed to ensure Connecticut's commitment to protecting all LGBT LGBTQ plus residents from discrimination and as as fully realized by our elders. This bill also equips providers and facilities with the tools they need to ensure all people have the ability to age with dignity and care, including LGBTQ plus people and people aging with HIV. The bill would make it unlawful for long-term care facilities to discriminate against residents based on their sexual orientation, gender identity, gender expression, or HIV status. It would prevent denial of admission, involuntary transfers, or evictions based on LGBTQ status, require cultural competency training for facility staff to better serve LGBTQ residents, and require facilities to post non-discrimination policies and LGBTQ-friendly signage. Facilities are also required to support LGBTQ plus residents and their desire to express their community and cultural alongside other cultural programming. Recognize and mitigate the isolation of discrimination often faced by LGBTQ seniors in care settings. And of course, ensure LGBTQ seniors can live openly and authentically in long-term care, promoting their overall health and happiness, which is actually no more than anyone else would hope for. Connecticut has a long history of bipartisan support for LGBTQ plus community. I am grateful to the committee for your attention to this matter and for your time today. Also, earlier Senator Marks had asked if the current political climate was a catalyst for this bill. I would have to say that that is absolutely true. I am married to my partner of 31 years, and I worry about our future and mourn for the luxuries, or AKA rights, that everyone else lives with in this state and in this country. And we may be losing those rights, and it's very sad for us and frightening. Again, thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Karen, again, for coming and testifying and sharing your concerns and fears, and I think we share those, and that's one of the reasons why we are all here. So thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Callan Smith.
Yeah, that's me. Hi.
Go ahead.
Okay, sorry, let me start here. Senator, good afternoon, Senator Hockadel, Representative Garabey, and distinguished members of the Aging Committee. My name is Callan Smith. I'm a resident of East Granby, Connecticut, and I'm here today in support of HB 6913, an act concerning LGBTQ plus discrimination in long-term care facilities. It is my honest opinion that everyone deserves to be treated equally regardless of their sexual orientation. Equal treatment itself begins with respect, and what could be less disrespectful than denying LGBTQ plus elders proper care in facilities? While none of my own grandparents are members of this community, I do know what it feels like to take care of relatives and to make sure they are getting proper care in their group homes. I could only imagine how much more of a struggle it would be for both myself and for them if they were denied proper care simply based on who they love or how they presented themselves. To not pass this bill would be barbaric and would show that Connecticut is no longer a safe place for LGBTQ plus people. After all, we will all we will we will all get old one day, and LGBTQ plus people such as myself may need to be put in a care facility. Denying this bill could very well cripple the future of every LGBTQ plus person in Connecticut. In fact, the consequences of this bill, denial of admission and involuntary transfers, could potentially lead to many cases of people dying from improper care. For our present and our future, please consider passing this bill. Connecticut has a long history of bipartisan support for the LGBTQ plus community, and I'm grateful to the community to the committee for your attention to this matter and for your time today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Callan. Any questions? Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, Senator Hockadel, Representative Garabey, and Representative Bolinsky. It's my pleasure to be here today. My name's Kristi Koval. I'm the Director of Public Policy for the Alzheimer's Association Connecticut Chapter, and you do have my written testimony. I am here today to support two bills from the Alzheimer's Association's perspective. The first is Raised Bill 6771, an act requiring health insurance coverage for biomarker testing. We're very excited to be in support of this bill with the American Cancer Society and a number of other organizations currently. There are some FDA-approved biomarker tools, such as brain imaging, that can be used to aid in the diagnosis of people with symptoms of dementia. Some of these tools already have a wealth of research and clinical data to support their use in a clinical setting, while other emerging biomarkers are promising but still under investigation, such as blood tests. And we know that we're getting closer than ever to a blood test for diagnosis for Alzheimer's disease, which is very exciting. And we also do know that there are two disease-modifying drugs right now in the market to treat the biology of Alzheimer's disease. So we do believe that this biomarker testing will be very, very helpful for folks who are showing symptoms of the disease, but also to to guide in treatment. And so we would ask that the bill be amended to reflect that as well, to have coverage for biomarker testing when medically appropriate, and we'll remove the barriers that prevent people who are living with dementia from benefiting from biomarker testing. Secondarily, we are here today in strong support of Raised Bill 6912, which is an act establishing an Alzheimer's disease and dementia advisory council. We've been very proud to partner with the Department of Public Health on the coalition for the Alzheimer's disease state plan. This is a large coalition. There are about 50 representatives from 40 organizations around the state, and right now we're in the implementation phase of the 2023 plan. So what does that mean? That means that we're looking at active workforce issues. We're doing awareness around early detection and diagnosis. We're looking at how do people find out about Alzheimer's disease? What are the risk factors? And there are a number of states that have formed advisory councils, which are smaller groups of appointed residents that look at updating the plan. So this is a mechanism that basically updates the Alzheimer state plan so that the work continues. We recognize that this is a grant-funded project. We want to make sure that Alzheimer's disease is a priority for the state should the grant funding cease, and so we do believe that this is very important. A number of other states, such as Illinois, Kentucky, and Virginia, have advisory councils, and I'm happy to answer questions on either of these bills, and thank you for your time today.
Thank you so much.
Oops. Excuse me.
It's okay, happened to me earlier.
At least I'm timing myself.
Can you talk a little bit about the specifics? If I'm already diagnosed, for example, what is the biomarker test going to do for me?
So that's a great question. So the biomarker test could potentially guide you in terms of what type of treatment is right for you. So we have folks who have had access to this type of testing if they qualify for a clinical trial right now, and we do know that the diagnosis of getting a diagnosis is very, very challenging for a number of reasons. You know, in terms of recognition signs and symptoms, also making sure that you go to your primary care, and then the wait times to to get an appointment with a neurologist can be very lengthy. So we want to remove as many barriers that can be removed as possible. So we do believe that having access to this will help guide specific kinds of treatment, should that be available. And you want to make sure that if you are getting to that point, that you're diagnosed early, so you can be eligible, because the two drugs that are on the market right now are only for people in the early stage of the disease. So they're not they're not for folks in the moderate to later stages of Alzheimer's disease.
Good. Are there any other questions? No? I mean, I have a lot swirling, but I'll talk to you afterward.
Okay, terrific. Thank you. Happy to answer them.
Yeah, we know where to find you.
Yep.
Senator Hockadel says.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Janet Peck, and I'm here with my wife Carol Conklin in support of HB 6913, an act concerning LGBTQ plus discrimination in long-term care facilities. Carol and I are lifelong Connecticut residents and presently live in Colchester. We fell in love and began to share our lives together 49 years ago. We married 16 years ago. We were one of the plaintiff couples in the Carrigan case that made our marriage possible. Eight years ago, Carol was diagnosed with Alzheimer's disease. We have so far been fortunate that I've been able to take care of her at home, and our plan is to continue to do so. However, there may come a time when I may not be able to provide the care that Carol requires, and we may have to make the difficult decision for her to enter a care facility. This decision is hard enough for all people, but made more difficult for LGBTQ plus people for fear that we could be ostracized, isolated, and harassed. Although we are presently living well with Alzheimer's, and we are still very much in love, Alzheimer's does have its challenges. Having to worry that Carol might not receive the treatment she deserves in a care facility should not be one of these challenges. Having training for staff, having a liaison to address our needs of any concerns we may have, having signage to welcome us, and programs that honor our culture would ensure that we could live openly and authentically at a time in our lives when we are the most vulnerable. If Carol were to enter a care facility, this bill would ensure that when I came to visit, our relationship to each other would be honored, that any harassment from staff or other residents would be addressed, and that we would be treated with the dignity and respect that we deserve. I'm not getting any younger, and I received a cancer diagnosis this past year. If I were to pre-decease Carol, she would not be able to live alone and would have to enter, excuse me, a long-term care facility. It would be my dying wish that Carol would get the best care possible, that she would be treated with respect, and that she could continue to live openly and authentically. This would mean everything to me. The bill would ensure that would happen. In today's political climate, where our federal government seems intent on erasing the gains and rights that LGBTQ people have fought for and Carol and I have fought for for all of our lives, especially the rights of people, and especially for the rights of people who are transgender, it is critically important that we have the protections on a state level. Connecticut has been a leader in supporting the LGBTQ plus community. We ask that you continue this leadership and support this bill, ensuring that LGBTQ plus elders, including Carol, will get the treatment they deserve in long-term care facilities.
Thank you for your time and attention. Please support me and vote for this bill. Thank you.
Thank you both so much. On a less serious note, I want to congratulate you both on 49 years. You know, that's amazing. So, congratulations. And we think this is important too, and that's what we're all here for. So, thank you for coming and sharing your story.
Thank you.
Oh, Rep. Bolinski has a question. I'm sorry.
Rep. Bolinski has some full of questions today. He's he's full of genuine respect for your testimony. I love your love and the provisions that are so important to you. Or as my colleague just said, they're terribly, terribly important to us. So, I'm sorry for your diagnosis, and I wish both of you all of the best, and we will give you our best. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jeanette Sullivan?
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Senator Hockendale, Representative Garibay, Senator Semenara, Representative Bolinski, and distinguished members of the Aging Committee. My name is Jeanette Sullivan Martinez, and I am President of the Resident Council at Pendleton Rehabilitation and Healthcare in Mystic. I am also President of the Statewide Coalition of Presidents of Resident Council. The SCPRC is an organization of nursing home resident council presidents throughout the state who work together to empower Connecticut's 20,000 nursing home residents to self-advocate on issues that directly impact their care and quality of life. I would like to provide my written testimony in support of SB 1279 before you today. Few experiences are more disheartening than waiting in discomfort and uncertainty for essential assistance. Although I am continent, my physical needs require the help of two aides and a Sierra lift for toileting. When staffing is insufficient, I am often left waiting for too long, fearing that I may have had an accident. This fear is not unfounded. I've experienced it before. The psychological stress of waiting combined with the fear of losing my dignity weighs heavily on me. The staff who care for us are compassionate and dedicated, but they are stretched beyond their limits. Their exhaustion is evident, and their hurried steps and stressed expressions reflect a system that asks too much of too few. Increasing staffing ratios is not just a policy change. It's a moral obligation. Every resident deserves individual care, not rushed visits and hurried assistance. I ask each of you to reflect. Does our current system embody the values of respect, dignity, and care that we profess to uphold? Are we truly providing the individualized care every resident deserves? Or are we allowing systematic shortcomings to erode the compassionate care we are entitled to? One delayed response at a time? I urge you to consider that these frustrations and conditions may one day be your own if left unaddressed. Supporting SB 1279 means security dignity, securing dignity not only for today's residents, but for future generations, including your peers and even yourselves. Supporting SB 1279 is not just about numbers. It's about restoring humanity to the care we receive and supporting the caregivers who give so much. I urge you to fulfill your obligation to protect those who rely on your support and advocacy for their well-being. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you so much for coming and testifying. Are there any questions? Seeing none, thank you. Robert Bobby Willis?
Good afternoon, distinguished members of the Aging Committee. Hello, I'm Robert Bobby Willis, a Resident Council President at Westside Care Center in Manchester. I also serve on the Executive Board for the Statewide Coalition of Presidents of Resident Councils here in Connecticut. And I'm here to share my experiences and those of my fellow residents regarding the critical issue of nursing home staffing and to express our support for SB 1279. In our facility, particularly on my wing, we face significant challenges stemming from insufficient staffing levels. With 35 residents and only three aides assigned, each aide is responsible for approximately 12 residents. The ratio makes it exceedingly difficult to staff, I mean, for staff to provide individualized care and attention that each resident deserves. Compounding this issue, when staff members are required to accompany residents on medical appointments outside the facility, that takes the aide out of the mix, and the remaining aides must care for all of us. As you can imagine, the situation is overwhelming for staff and frustrating for residents as it inevitably leads to delays in care. You hear residents' reports concerning about prolonged wait times for assistance, discomfort, or even the feeling neglected. The aides are stretched thin, burnt out, and dissatisfied. Despite their dedication, I watch how the overwhelming workload hinders their ability to perform their duties. I see it come out of frustration voiced by both staff and residents. The frustration can cause strain, and the strain caused by insufficient staffing leads to tension between residents and staff. Some residents express dissatisfaction due to the unmet needs, which can at times be misdirected towards the aides. The dynamic can create a negative environment bordering on toxic despite the staff's best interests. Still, I know of many other residents who are hesitant to voice their opinions and concerns of inadequacy staffing at all for fear of retaliation or worsening care. This fear perpetuates a cycle of silence, preventing the issues from being addressed and resolved. Implementing minimum staffing ratios as proposed in SB 1279 is essential to secure, I mean, ensure that residents receive the quality care they deserve. Adequate staffing would allow for more personalized and timely care, reduce the burden on the individual aides, decrease in burnout and turnover, and foster a more positive and supportive environment within the facility. As the Resident Council President, I urge the committee to consider the real-world implications of staffing shortages on residents' daily lives. Passing SB 1279 would be a significant step toward improving the quality of care in nursing homes across Connecticut. Thank you for your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby, and thank you for your leadership at West Side. You're the family council or which council are you?
The resident.
The Residence Council. So, thank you for your leadership there and for coming out today to testify. Are there any questions or comments? We thank you.
Thank you.
David Angel? I hope I'm saying it correctly.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes. Hi, it's David Angel, but thank you for trying. Good afternoon, Senator Hockadel, Representative Garibay, Vice Chair Senator Miller, and Representative Fortier, Ranking Member Senator Wong, and Representative Bolinski. Thank you for your time and your service. My name is David Angel, and I'm a Service Navigator for the Southwestern Connecticut Agency on Aging. In our Aging Answers Department, we work with hundreds of seniors per month to assist with understanding and navigating Medicare, Medicaid, their complex interactions, as well as providing other resources available in our southwestern region. I am testifying in support of Senate Bill 6911, raising the $1,600 per month limit to qualify for Medicaid. In my work, I counsel individuals day in and day out on Medicare and Medicaid, as well as assisting seniors and their loved ones to apply for and navigate the Connecticut Home Care Program for Elders. These are only some of the many hats those of us in the Aging Answers Department wear at any given time. This work is incredibly rewarding as it allows me to speak personally with our elders or their loved ones to break down and demystify these programs, which could be complicated and overwhelming for even the most experienced and well-educated to navigate. On a daily basis, I hear how valuable access to these programs is and how life-changing they can be. The Connecticut Home Care Program for Elders, which provides services to thousands of vulnerable elders in our community at any time, allows seniors to stay safe in their homes, surrounded by their families, and integrated in their local communities, diverting them away from long-term care in facilities, which leads to worse health outcomes than aging in place in their home, as well as tremendous costs to the state. In my work, the $1,600 per month limit on Medicaid is one of the biggest barriers I see to providing some of our most vulnerable seniors with valuable care when they are most in need. $1,600 per month is less than take-home pay at a full-time minimum wage job. $1,600 per month can be less than the average monthly rent for a reasonable apartment in our region, which many seniors are forced to pay because of a lack of affordable senior housing. With $1,600 in the bank, many things are out of reach for a senior: common home repairs, vehicle repairs, out-of-pocket medical expenses, and other emergency costs which can arise without warning. An increase to $10,000 to qualify for Medicaid does not mean people of extravagant means will suddenly be eligible for state-funded healthcare and services. This would simply ensure that seniors can qualify for supports which will keep them safe and healthy in their homes, while also able to overcome inevitable financial struggles without falling further into poverty and risking adverse financial outcomes such as loss of housing. I urge you to consider this bill to ensure access to these valuable programs. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions or comments? Rep. Bolinski?
David, thank you for your work as a navigator. You and your associates do an incredible job at leveling the playing field when it comes to our constituents that can't quite figure their way through the system. So, what you say matters, and we appreciate your work.
Thank you so much, Representative Bolinski. I appreciate the kind words. And it's, you know, these systems are very, very complex, as I stated. You know, it's something that I hear every single day. People who are new to Medicare will say, you know, I'm educated. I don't feel like I'm, you know, a dumb person. I feel like I'm generally pretty smart, but this stuff just goes over my head. So, it's very valuable and extremely rewarding. So, you know, thank you for the recognition and the support.
You're very, very welcome. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Maureen McIntyre on Zoom, I believe.
Yes, good afternoon. Greetings, Co-Chairs Senator Hockadel and Representative Garibay, Vice Chair Senator Miller and Representative Fortier, and Ranking Members Senator Wong and Representative Bolinski. My name is Maureen McIntyre. I am the CEO of the North Central Area Agency on Aging. And on behalf of Aging CT, I respectfully request that you accept this testimony in support of SB 6771, an act requiring health insurance coverage for biomarker testing, as well as SB 6912, an act establishing an Alzheimer's Disease and Dementia Advisory Council. You have our written testimony, so I will paraphrase and reiterate the importance of what these bills represent. And on behalf of the other area agencies on aging, we do very much appreciate Marie Allen for taking the wonky one earlier. Taken individually, these bills make very important points. SB 6771 encourages expeditious diagnosis by addressing a common financial barrier. And SB 6912 solidifies a legislative mandate behind a comprehensive state Alzheimer's plan. Taken together, these bills demonstrate that the Connecticut Legislature understands the impact of Alzheimer's disease on Connecticut's long-term care system and continues to identify and address existing obstacles to receiving care. 6912 sets the context. Arguably, an advisory council is the next logical and necessary step in Connecticut's commitment to a multi-sector state Alzheimer's plan. In 2021, as the Commissioner identified earlier, Connecticut Connecticut did successfully apply for and implement a bold grant. And in two thousand twenty three, the dementia services coordinator position was created within the Bureau of Aging Services. Therefore, an advisory council, including individuals living with dementia, appointees from state agencies, nonprofit service organizations, and home healthcare agencies, represents Connecticut's maintenance of effort and ensures that the state Alzheimer's plan is successfully enshrined. Meanwhile, SB sixty seven seventy one will directly support one of the advisory council's goals of earlier diagnosis by addressing just one of the many root causes for the delay, financial considerations due to non-coverage by insurance. In addition to a consumer's potential for prolonged autonomy, independence, and dignity of choice facilitated by an expeditious diagnosis, there is an undeniable financial benefit to the healthcare system as well. Connecticut residents will continue to be diagnosed with Alzheimer's disease. It is a certainty based on science and demographics. Enacting legislation that addresses this reality is prudent, cost-effective, and consistent with the aging-in-place preferences of Connecticut's older adults. And if I may, with any time I may have left, I would like to also please state for the record Aging CT's support of HB sixty nine thirteen, an act concerning LGBTQ plus discrimination in long-term care facilities. Briefly, discrimination on the basis of sex significantly undermines Connecticut's efforts to enable older adults to age well in the setting of their choice. And it's often exacerbated in skilled nursing facilities despite best efforts to the contrary. HB sixty nine thirteen carries an important message, and we should be listening. Thank you so much for your attention and consideration this afternoon.
Thank you so much, Maureen. Are there any comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the for having me.
Lindsay Kelly.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon, distinguished members of the Aging Committee. My name is Lindsay Kelly. I'm a certified genetic counselor. I hold a master's degree in public health, and I serve as the Associate Director for the MCGI, which is an initiative at the Jackson Laboratory to ensure access to biomarker testing and personalized medicine for rural and underserved cancer patients. I'm here today testifying in support of HB six seven seven one, an act requiring health insurance coverage for biomarker testing with the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network requested amendment to strengthen the existing language by including cost guardrails and ensuring post-diagnosis access to biomarker testing. I have submitted written testimony as well. The Jackson Laboratory is an independent five oh one C three nonprofit biomedical research institute. Jax's mission is to discover precise genomic solutions to disease and empower the global biomedical community to in shared quest to improve human health. In two thousand fourteen, Jax opened its state-of-the-art genomics research center in Farmington, Connecticut, seeking to build collaborations among doctors, researchers, and the biomedical industry to translate genomic research discoveries into new treatments, diagnostics, and therapies. Research labs at our Farmington facility focus on understanding the complex causes of disease and improving health outcomes by matching the right treatment to the right patients at the right time. As one of the only seven National Cancer Institute-recognized basic science research centers in the U.S., Jax actively engages with fellow cancer centers across the country to amplify the impact of its research and facilitate the translation of findings into real-world clinical applications. At Jax, we believe the future of medicine involves understanding a person's disease at an individual level and treating it based on those unique features. The historical one-size-fits-all approach to treating human disease has proven inadequate, expensive, and sometimes harmful. Fortunately, we now possess novel technologies that enable us to assess the genetics of individuals and the genomics of diseases. Biomarker testing is a foundational way to approach individualized medicine. We have seen the benefits of biomarker testing in Maine, where Jax also has a presence. We've been leading the MCGI in Maine since two thousand sixteen. This initiative provides oncologists with the tools necessary for personalized cancer treatments by incorporating biomarker testing results into treatment plans for their patients across the entire state. Through this work, MCGI has amassed compelling evidence that personalized cancer treatments provide significant benefit to patients. In a publication from May two thousand twenty four, MCGI shared data confirming that Maine-based patients receiving a personalized treatment approach were thirty-one percent less likely to die within one year compared to those who did not receive a personalized treatment approach. This study confirms a significant one-year survival benefit from biomarker testing. Through our initiative at Jax, we have seen countless examples of patients whose biomarker testing has opened new doors for for them and for their treatment options. One patient with pancreatic cancer had biomarker testing that identified an FDA-approved targeted treatment that she was able to stay on for many months. Then, based on a different biomarker, she was able to enroll in a state-of-the-art clinical trial at the NIH looking for a new way of harnessing a patient's own immune cells to change them in the lab and then inject them back into the patient to significantly fight the cancer. Finally, this patient is now looking at enrolling on yet another clinical trial at her home oncology clinic to target a different biomarker that was identified in her tumor. This patient is still living with pancreatic cancer over two years after being diagnosed and has even recently finished hiking in the White Mountains. So to summarize, biomarkers provide information that can make a difference between the wrong cancer treatment and the right cancer treatment. Ineffectual treatment is costly, not just in medical bills, but also in precious time and emotional duress. Everyone should have access to biomarker testing, not just those individuals who can financially cover the cost. And the expansion of biomarker coverage would be beneficial to the work of healthcare providers, the prognosis and quality of life for patients, and the financial impact on the entire healthcare system. We're grateful for the aging community for raising HB six seven seven one and encourage its advancement. Thank you very much for having me, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Lindsay. Senator Hockadel.
Thank you for your testimony. I'm just curious, could you tell us the approximate amount of the testing? How much does it cost?
It's a tricky question because biomarker covers a huge range of different types of testing. So if we think about biomarker testing in the case of breast cancer where we're just, you know, when we might just start by looking at hormone expression, those tests are are pretty insignificant, probably in the, you know, less than a hundred dollars for the test. When we're talking about more in detail, full, comprehensive genomic profiling of a tumor, my my general understanding is that what's charged to insurance companies is around somewhere between two to five thousand dollars, depending on how comprehensive the testing is.
Thank you so much for that. Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Josh Pollak.
I can't tell if I'm in the room. Oh, I look like I am in the room. So distinguished members of the Aging Committee, Chairs Hockadel and Garibay, Ranking Members Huang and Bolinsky. My name is Josh Pollak. I'm the Minister at the Unitarian Universalist Society East in Manchester. I vote in the thirty-first House District and the Fourth Senate District. Thank you for this opportunity to submit testimony in support of HB sixty nine thirteen, an act concerning LGBTQ plus discrimination in long-term care facilities. I want to give you just a little background on why I'm here today. Unitarian Universalists were among the first mainline denominations in the United States to welcome and affirm lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer people as members of our congregations, lay leaders, and ordained clergy. We we are extraordinarily proud of this legacy of inclusion. We are also proud of our advocacy work in Connecticut in support of state employee domestic partner benefits, co-parent adoption, marriage equality, updating the state anti-discrimination statutes to include gender identity, and a lot more. And that's really the legacy that I bring to this testimony. It is a sad truth that LGBTQ plus residents in Connecticut and people living with HIV and AIDS in nursing homes report isolation, discrimination, and harassment resulting in substandard care. While we can't legislate behavior, there are definitely tools that long-term care facilities can deploy to ensure LGBTQ plus people can age with dignity. HB sixty nine thirteen identifies some of these tools. So for example, if it becomes law, facilities would use residents' preferred names and pronouns and allow them to use restrooms matching their gender identity. Facilities would not be able to deny admission, transfer residents involuntarily, or evict residents based on LGBTQ plus identity. Same-sex couples would be allowed to share rooms. Transgender residents would receive room placements that align with their gender identity. Staff would receive cultural competency training to better serve LGBTQ plus residents, including how to recognize and mitigate isolation. Facilities would designate LGBTQ plus liaisons to address specific needs and concerns. Facilities would post nondiscrimination policies and LGBTQ plus friendly signage. Facilities would ensure that LGBTQ plus seniors can live openly and authentically in long-term care, thus promoting their overall health and happiness. So I bring many pastoral concerns to this advocacy. Aging LGBTQ plus members of our congregation sometimes live in long-term care facilities, although no one in our congregation right now is is living in such a facility. Their quality of life matters to me. Their dignity matters to me. Their ability to live as who they are matters to me. Their ability to stay connected and avoid isolation matters to me. HB sixty nine thirteen addresses these pastoral concerns, and that's really why I urge you to support it. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for testifying and bringing some of those details that, you know, one might not normally think about, like being able to share a room. And, you know, what all most people just assume happens that we actually have to think about it and protect it. So thank you very much. Are there any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Tanya Mauer.
I believe this is live. Senator Hockadel and Representative Garibay, and the distinguished members of the aging community. My name's Tanya Mauer. I'm a caregiver and a care advocate for my mom who has Alzheimer's. I'm also a volunteer with the Alzheimer's Association. I have submitted written testimony, so I'll paraphrase as I go through. And thank you for the opportunity. I'll be touching on two of the bills. The first one being Raise Bill six seven seven one. I'll jump right in and ask, why can't we have coverage for biomarkers that would inform daughters, sons, siblings of those diagnosed so that we can plan for our futures? Why? Why can't we take the fear out of the word dementia and enable logical testing options earlier in someone's life? Testing like we have done for high blood pressure, high cholesterol, poor blood sugar, and breast cancer, even prostate cancer. Biomarkers are measurable biological changes that can show if a disease is present or if somebody's at risk. I am slightly angry that I have to advocate so hard for myself to even have any kind of baseline memory-type testing. The difference between a three-hour neuropsych exam that I have to pay for out of my own pocket because insurance won't cover it versus a covered visit to a lab simply to draw blood or have a scan is huge. Allowing for biomarkers to be covered as a preemptive strike against Alzheimer's or any other type of disease give us the tools and the coverage to know where we stand with the disease. With that said, I respectfully request that the bill be supported so that we too can look to the future with a level of hope. Moving to Raise Bill six nine one two. I urgently support this bill because an advisory council is needed to further solidify the Alzheimer's state plan. Here's why. In my day job, I work for a company that supports older adults that move into both independent and assisted living communities, even memory care. I have completed many of those moves. Ninety percent of those clients that I have worked with have some level of cognitive decline. I have had clients that have stopped driving but had no idea how to arrange for transportation on the day of their move. I have had clients that didn't understand how to turn off their cable or their utilities, resulting in that being shut down before they even leave their home. I've had clients that were living in mice-infested homes with no one to help them. I have had clients with pets that they couldn't take with them, but they didn't know what to do next. I have had clients that have had boxes and boxes of new products that they said simply showed up at their door, but likely they bought and didn't remember. Who's helping these Connecticut residents? We must solve this. It is a lost population and needs our help, needs your help. Here's another reason. Every servicing organization, eye doctor, dentist, hairdresser, lawyer, CPA, et cetera, need to be watchful for our neighbors, patrons, clients that are struggling. These are people who miss appointments, show up a week early for an appointment, show up a week late. They park mishap haphazardly. They repeat questions. They don't have any help. There is a phrase, it takes a village, excuse me, to raise a child. Guess what? It takes a village to take care of those with dementia. We must be proactive. An advisory board will be critical to helping to frame and further awareness for programs, training, and action plans, and all those what-if scenarios, and to help further distinctimize, distigmatize the diagnosis so those in Connecticut will know that regardless of their dementia or cognitive decline, it will be okay. Thank you for listening. And if there's any questions.
Great testimony and more, you gave a face to actual scenarios. And it'll each of us will be hit with something different, but I know if I had to give up my puppy, no, seriously, it would be, you know, that's my happy place to leave here, go home, and watch a movie with my dog. My husband too, but the dog. Love them both. Yeah, love them both.
I get it.
But you know what I mean? It makes it really a face that if I were to start to imagine some of the scenarios that you just shared with us, it's horrific. So thank you for coming and speaking so well, as my colleagues have said. Representative Bolinsky.
Thank you for what you do, and also thank you for your your advocacy and your observations of of what what it is in the village that needs to be watched for. I'm going to put in a plug along with that. One of the canaries in the coal mine, the first sign of need sometimes comes in the form of adult or senior nutrition programs such as Meals on Wheels. Because in some cases, we have folks living in isolation that are suffering from the beginning stages or more advanced stages of dementia. And by self-isolation, the only person that sees them on a regular basis, three times a week perhaps, is the Meals on Wheels person. And one of the things that is so valuable about that service is the you know, the early warning in addition to the socialization aspect. And we also don't do a particularly good job plunding our nonprofits and senior nutrition in particular. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to put in a plug for that, as well as 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 all that you do, not just for your clients, but for, you know, for your loved one. So.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any questions?
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jean Mills, and I'm going to Aranha.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. My name is Jean Mills-Arana, and I'm an elder law attorney with Connecticut Legal Services. I served on the governor's nursing home and assisted living oversight working group and on its staffing subcommittee. On behalf of Connecticut's legal aid programs and our low-income elderly clients, I'm submitting my testimony in support of three bills, 1279, 6911, and 1280. Each of these bills address long-term problems for Connecticut's elders of limited means. Senate Bill 1279, an act concerning nursing home staffing ratios, and I have submitted on all of these written testimony, which is much longer than what my oral testimony will be. All of you already know that adequate staffing in nursing homes means better quality of care and reduced incidence of abuse and neglect of residents. For decades, studies have shown that the amount of staff time devoted to direct care of nursing home residents is too low. Connecticut has worked through this committee, thankfully, to increase the required hours of staffing, and we're up to 3.0 hours since 2021. I'd like to just point out that the ombudsman tested that about half the nursing homes meet that standard. That means half the nursing homes don't meet that standard. And you heard from some residents that the staffing is still stretched beyond its limits, even at the 3.0 hours. 1279 requires the amount of direct care staffing to increase to 3.6 hours, and then in 2028 to 4.1 hours, with specific amounts of time required for RNs, LPNs, and CNAs. This is a longstanding national and local problem. In 2001, the Federal Department of Health and Human Services issued a report to Congress after 10 years of study, finding that a minimum of 4.1 hours of nursing care per resident per day was needed to meet the federal quality standards at that time. It also found that specific amounts of RN, LPN, and CNA time was optimal. Resident acuity has only increased in the last 25 years, as people with lower acuity needs take advantage of home and community-based programs. More recent studies suggest that even higher hours of care are often needed in nursing homes, especially in facilities with more acute needs. This was borne out during the COVID-19 pandemic. Studies showed that more staffing, and particularly more skilled staffing, had better outcomes, including significantly fewer cases and deaths per licensed bed. Staffing by registered nurses was found to be especially significant. But obviously, staffing levels are not important just during a pandemic, and I urge you to pass Senate Bill 1279 with its requirements for specific amounts of time for registered nurses, licensed practical nurses, and registered nurses aides. Note that these changes in 2020, the final changes in 2028, merely bring Connecticut's minimum care requirement up to what CMS found was needed in 2001. So I think that's something we should certainly reach for. To support compliance with the new staffing requirements, SB 1279 also imposes a strict application of penalties for noncompliance. And it also has an important provision about the number of therapeutic recreational staff in long care facilities. This was something that was recommended by the governor's working group, and it was mistakenly enacted in '21 with requiring a lower amount of recreational staff, and it was supposed to be a higher amount. So fortunately, Senate Bill 1279 finally corrects this error. We strongly support passage of 1279 to improve Connecticut care of its nursing home residents. We're also in support of HB 6911 regarding asset limits.
Please summarize.
Yes. Marie Allen did a great job of explaining this and how elders need the money in order to sustain themselves in the community. I'd just like to point out that by being able to be maintained in the community, they don't have to move into nursing homes. And the state's cost for nursing home care will far exceed the cost of any home and community-based services. Lastly, we support Senate Bill 1280 concerning the responsibilities of the community ombudsman program, which was very well explained by Marie Painter. So I'll stop there. Thank you for your time and for your work improving the lives of Connecticut seniors, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, thank you. Bright Johnson.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Good afternoon. I am Bright Johnson, Connecticut Government Relations Director for the American Cancer Society, Cancer Action Network, and a resident of West Hartford. We have submitted longer written comments on HB 6771, an act requiring insurance coverage for biomarker testing, so I'll use my time to touch upon some key points. First, I want to thank the Aging Committee for raising this legislation, which has been a priority issue for over three years for my organization and many others. As all legislation is a work in progress at this point in the session, we will be supporting the concept, but respectfully also submitting a friendly amendment that ensures patient access for the purposes of diagnosis, treatment, appropriate management, or ongoing monitoring of a patient's disease or condition when the test is supported by medical and scientific evidence, as well as providing flexibility towards future innovations and applications. This amendment will ensure Connecticut residents covered by state-regulated insurance plans have coverage for biomarker testing when clinically appropriate. Biomarker testing analyzes tissue, blood, or other biospecimen to identify mutations that may impact treatment decisions. This testing is an important step to accessing personalized medicine, which uses information about a person's own genes or proteins to target therapies to treat diseases like cancer, potentially leading to improved survivorship and better quality of life for patients. Personalized or precision medicine has become a standard practice for most patients with advanced disease, with multiple FDA-approved targeted therapies across several cancer types, including breast, lung, colon, cervical, prostate, and others, replacing the historical one-size-fits-all chemo treatment. Biomarker testing is really sort of the gateway to many of these therapies, helping connect patients with more effective treatments with fewer side effects, longer survival, and allow patients to avoid treatments that are likely to be ineffective or unnecessary. Biomarker testing is not indicated or appropriate for all cancer patients. We are not advocating for testing on demand or universal biomarker testing, rather for the purposes of diagnosis, treatment, appropriate management, or ongoing monitoring of a disease or condition when the test is supported by medical and scientific evidence, which is enumerated in the proposed amendment. While most current applications are in cancer, biomarker testing is becoming increasingly important to the treatment of other disease areas, including arthritis, other autoimmune conditions, organ and tissue transplant, rare diseases, and preeclampsia. There is also exciting biomarker research happening in many other areas, including Alzheimer's, other neurological conditions, cardiology, and more. Current non-oncology biomarker testing applications could be used to address common comorbidities in cancer patients and survivors. And as personalized medicine continues to evolve, non-oncology biomarker testing applications will likely have an increasing role in guiding treatment for patients. The proposed amendment includes very specific sources of evidence to guide coverage, ensuring coverage is only required when there is strong scientific and medical evidence that the test would provide a benefit to the patient. These sources will flex with future innovations and applications, making sure all plans are playing by the same rules and making it possible for more patients to get the right treatment at the right time. Again, thank you very much for raising HB 6771, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you again. Bilal Tajedin. Hey, you guys are challenging me today. Matt Blinstrubus.
That's good.
Was I close?
Senator Huckabee, Representative Garbe, Senator Huang, and Representative Bolinski, and distinguished members of the Aging Committee. My name is Matt Blinstrubus, and I'm the Executive Director of Equality Connecticut, an organization dedicated to advancing the rights, health, history, culture, and culture of Connecticut's LGBTQ community. And I'm testifying in support of HB 6913, an act concerning LGBTQ discrimination in long-term care facilities. This bill is an important and appropriate extension of the state's commitment to protecting everyone, including LGBTQ people. If passed, Connecticut will join California, Oregon, New York, New Jersey, and Massachusetts as states that have enacted similar laws to protect our elders. Connecticut has some of the oldest and strongest nondiscrimination laws in the country. This bill is a powerful example of this committee and the entire CGA's dedication to live up to the standards set forth when our state enacted those laws. It's an acknowledgement also that the work is not yet finished. As a community, as lawmakers, and as a state, we all have a responsibility to reflect on those laws and continuously work to make sure that the goals expressed therein are fully realized for everyone. And when they are not, or if a group of people is being left behind in implementation, it's up to us all to take further action to ensure that everyone is fully protected. Now, think about this for a minute. 1991, the year that Connecticut banned discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation, was one of the deadliest years of the early AIDS crisis, with deaths eventually peaking in 1995. Today, thanks to lifesaving advances in treatment, people living with HIV receiving adequate care can expect to live full lifespans. By 2030, it's estimated that over 70% of people living with HIV will be over the age of 50. The advocates and leaders who fought for that law in Connecticut in 1991 would surely consider that statistic nothing short of a miracle. The generation of people who saw HIV go from a death sentence to a manageable health condition are getting older. As they begin entering long-term care, this bill will help both patients and providers pave the way for what it means to age with dignity while living with HIV. Additionally, with the freedom to marry secured and increased social acceptance of same-sex relationships, same-sex couples are seeking long-term care together and separately. And we've heard repeated stories about folks going back in the closet as they seek this care. Transgender people are seeking health care at all ages. Visibility and belonging and access to care for trans residents is urgently needed and chronically overlooked among our seniors. Reports of isolation and harassment are increasingly common in Connecticut, and you've heard testimony about that today as well. We also know that LGBTQ people are more likely to be single, to live alone, or to not have children to care for them as they age. And that makes it all the more likely that they will need welcoming long-term care facilities. This bill will help both providers and patients better understand one another. It ensures that the rights of LGBTQ people, as expressed in our nondiscrimination laws, are fully respected and realized for everyone. It moves us closer as a state to ensuring everyone here has the right and ability to live and age with dignity, surrounded by their loved ones and community, and it makes sure LGBTQ people are empowered to seek the care they need as they age. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you so much. Matt. Are there any comments or questions? Thank you so much. That's all right. John Belliciano. We see John every year.
Yep.
You've been very patient.
Very.
Very.
Good afternoon, distinguished members of the Aging Committee. My name is John Belliciano, and I am a resident of the president of the resident council at Apple Rehab Uit. I also serve as vice president of the statewide Coalition of Presidents of Resident Councils. I come before you today with both thanks and concern. Thanks for your efforts to update the minimum staffing requirement in 2021, and concern because many of the same issues I raised then continue to affect my fellow residents and me. That is why I strongly support SB 1279. The 2021 staffing increase was a step forward, but it hasn't been enough. My friends, neighbors, and I still face delays in getting the care we need to live with dignity and independence. Residents still wait too long for help getting out of bed, taking a shower, or using the bathroom. These aren't rare incidents. They are daily realities. Let me remind you of an example I shared before that. Sadly, sadly still happens today. Residents waiting for hours for help to use the toilet, an agonizing, embarrassing, and dangerous experience. I wish I could say this was in the past, but I continue to hear the same stories. Long waits for basic care rob residents of their dignity. It's not just personal care that suffers. It affects our whole quality of life. Staff shortages impact social activities, too. On my side of the building, there are 30 residents. Many of them look forward to bingo, not just for the game, but for connection, laughter, and joy. But too often, they miss out because there aren't enough staff to help them get there. Bingo is more than a game. It's a lifeline to community. When staffing is short, residents are isolated. That is why I fully support SB 1279. Despite the progress made in 2021, these ongoing issues show that more must be done. Raising staffing standards further will ensure residents the prompt, compassionate care we deserve. Care that protects not only our physical health, but also our emotional well-being. In 2021, you took action, and I am grateful. But I stand before you today because the job is not finished. Residents are still waiting, waiting for care, waiting for help, waiting for their lifeline. The time to act is now. Please support this increase to minimum staffing. Thank you for your time and commitment to improving the lives of residents like me.
Thank you, John, for such great testimony, and I love prompt and passionate, right? So I appreciate that. I just wanted to ask you, if, being the resident council president, when you bring some of these concerns, are you listened to? Do you feel you have a voice?
Well, yeah, sometimes they go by the wayside, too.
So sometimes yes, sometimes no.
Yeah.
Does anyone have comments or questions?
Thank you for leaving.
Thank you. Thank you for your service. Ruth Kenovi.
Hi, good afternoon.
Hello.
Hi. Distinguished chairpersons and members.
Hi, good afternoon.
Hello.
Hi. Distinguished chairpersons and members of the Aging Committee, my name is Ruth Kenobi, and I'm the Director of Advocacy for the American Lung Association in Connecticut. The Lung Association works to save lives by improving lung health and preventing lung disease through research, education, and advocacy. And we want to urge you to support House Bill 6771 with some changes to include cost guardrails, ensure access to testing post-diagnosis, and allow for flexibility in future innovations. But this legislation really will improve access to critical care for patients in Connecticut, including those with lung cancer. So comprehensive biomarker testing allows doctors to identify abnormalities in a tumorous DNA, which in turn helps healthcare providers determine the best course of treatment for cancer patients. This is particularly important when treating lung cancer, as there are currently FDA-approved lung cancer treatments for tumor abnormalities in nine distinct genes. Studies show that lung cancer patients that have access to biomarker testing and are thus able to receive targeted therapy treatments have better overall chances of survival. Biomarker testing is a crucial part of cancer care and has been incorporated into many clinical guidelines so that doctors may make the best decisions for their patients' health. Despite the evidence for the value of biomarker testing, most health coverage plans have been found to be more restrictive than the National Comprehensive Cancer Network's guidelines for biomarker testing. Many people who should receive biomarker testing may be unable to, so because of insurance coverage restrictions and high out-of-pocket costs. Therefore, it's important that this bill increases coverage for biomarker testing and removes some of these barriers to care. Increasing coverage of biomarker testing really will improve health equity in Connecticut and make cancer care more affordable and accessible for patients. As I think you've heard from a number of few people, we have some suggested changes to the language, which I believe you've received from some community partners, but they include kind of strengthening the existing language by including cost guardrails, ensuring post-diagnosis access to biomarker testing, as well as providing flexibility towards future innovations. So we strongly encourage you to move forward with this policy to ensure best possible coverage for all covered under Connecticut regulated plans. I really want to thank you for your time and consideration today and happy to talk with you further about any of this.
Thank you. Does anybody have questions or comments? Thank you so much for testifying.
Thank you, Representative.
Next up, we have Barbara Green.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, distinguished members of the Aging Committee. As you know, my name is Barbara Green. Please know that I am a lawyer with the law firm of Green and Gross in Bridgeport, where a significant part of my practice is devoted to addressing legal issues impacting elderly and disabled individuals. I am testifying today on behalf of the Elder Law Section of the Connecticut Bar Association and to express support for Senate Bill 6911, an act concerning asset limits for Husky Sea beneficiaries. Raising the Medicaid asset eligibility cap to $10,000 will enable individuals who are at risk for nursing home placement to remain in the community with the assistance of the Connecticut Home Care Program for Elders and with some financial security, and not to enter long-term care facilities, where, according to the Connecticut Partnership for Long-Term Care, the average private pay rate for a Connecticut semi-private nursing facility room was $179,300 per year as of April of 2024. So I have a very distinct memory of studying the Medicaid eligibility rules back in the fall of 1976, when I was a student at the Yukon School of Social Work and was committing to memory that the asset eligibility cap was $1,600. I don't mean to date myself, but again, that was 1976. Connecticut's asset eligibility cap for adults who are age 65 and older, blind, or living with a disability was set in 1973 and remains at $1,600, more than 50 years later. Because the asset test was established without factoring in inflation, someone with just $1,600 in savings in 1973 and who would have been eligible for Medicaid then is now ineligible for Medicaid with the equivalent inflation-adjusted savings of $11,373.15. Sadly, our wonderful state has the distinction of having the lowest Medicaid asset eligibility cap in the United States. One thing I've learned from my clients is that with rare exception, people want to age in place. People just want to stay home, and doing that when one is only permitted to have $1,600 in assets is beyond difficult, if not impossible. I ask that you consider my client, who I'll call Mary today. Mary continues to live in the Bridgeport home in which she grew up, and it's the only place that she wants to be despite the rodents, the sewage in her basement, the roof leaks, and the collapsing front porch. When only permitted to have $1,600 in cash, how can Mary, who is nearly 80 years old, ever be able to make the repairs necessary to make her home habitable? She just can't. It's impossible. Again, by increasing the asset eligibility limit, more seniors will be able to qualify for Medicaid and continue to live safely in their home with some financial security. This in turn will ease the financial burden of Connecticut's long-term care costs. Even better, individuals won't feel compelled to spend down their assets.
Please summarize.
... as they often feel they must for the purpose of qualifying for Medicaid. Instead, they'll be able to have some savings on hand to meet their basic needs and to perhaps save monies for the rainy day, that is, to repair that front porch or the leaky roof. I thank you for listening to my testimony today and especially for your commitment to supporting our state's older residents.
Thank you, and thank you for your commitment also. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, David Coleman.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Senator Hockadel, Representative Garabe, and distinguished members of the Aging Committee. My name is David Coleman, and I'm here with my wife Pamela Hirschenson. We are West Hartford residents and advocates for the Alzheimer's Association Connecticut Chapter. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on raised Bill 6771, an act requiring health insurance coverage for biomarker testing. My wife Pam is going to share her story first.
Hello, my name is Pamela Hirschenson. I've lived in West Hartford for over 30 years. My husband and I have two children and two grandchildren. I had my own law practice for 40 years and really enjoyed helping my clients. But then, two summers ago, I was diagnosed with Alzheimer's, and I had to stop practicing law and also stop driving. When I was told I had Alzheimer's, I cried. But last summer, I finally became eligible for a new medication called Lekimbe, which slows the progression of the disease. I go to Hartford Hospital for my infusions of Lekimbe every other week. It's actually kind of enjoyable. The nurses are wonderful, and they always offer me a selection of sandwiches and desserts for lunch. Once the IV begins, I don't feel anything. During the infusion, I either read or watch old episodes of Seinfeld on the overhead TV, which makes me laugh. While it's hard to know for sure, the infusion seemed to be working. I still read, play the piano, take classes at the senior center, see friends, and especially enjoy spending time with our grandchildren. I think most importantly, Lekimbe has given me hope. But it only slows the progression of the disease. It's not a cure. That's what we really need.
This is David again. As Pam's husband, I can share that getting the diagnosis and then starting the treatment was complicated and very time-consuming. Pam was diagnosed finally in the summer of 2023, and then it took until the summer of 2024, a full year later, to finally get approved and start on Lekimbe, the medication. We support insurance coverage for biomarker testing as a way to reduce barriers to getting diagnosis for Alzheimer's and other dementia. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Pam, I just want you to know that you're my hero, and if any day I have to face what you're facing, that I have your courage. So thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you. Last one I see is Erin Tax. Okay. Okay, well, thank you, everyone. Does anyone want to just say, what did they used to say on one of the shows anyways? Yeah, see you next time. We'll see you next week. To get away from the snow, maybe. But anyways, thank you, everyone, for coming and for spending the time, and we'll see you next week.